Okay. I'd like to call the February 14th Select Board Meeting to order.
Newman present?
Smith present.
Ranson present. And all. We'll start off with Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
You too.
Oh, yeah. It's been great. You can feel the love. And my counterparts read the minutes. Make any changes with comma?
I've read them, and I would make a motion to approve the minutes from January 31st.
Seconded.
On January 31st, our regular meeting minutes.
Regular meeting.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Newman aye?
Smith aye.
Ranson aye. And then I'd entertain a motion for our executive minutes, which we will hold.
Motion to approve the executive minutes from January 31st.
All those in favor?
Newman aye?
Smith aye.
Ranson aye. All right. And Stephen, I appreciate your here, and we will get you right after we talk to Lisa. Lisa, you want to go to the podium? And Lisa has volunteered to take over the duties with MART that Mr. Mackey is vacating after many, many years of service. We appreciate that. Richard? Lisa, you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair and Select Board Members. My name is Lisa Maroni. I reside at 19 Mortimer Road in Sterling, and I've been in town about five years. I've spent about a dozen years in economic development for the city of Lemonster. I am currently the Business Development Director for the town of Chelmsford. I'm also appointed on many other boards that affect transportation. And when I saw this opportunity to give back to my town, I thought it would be a great chance for me to kind of share my skills and knowledge. Spoke with Mr. Mackey at length last week or so, and submitted my application for consideration. I really enjoy living in town. I wanted to try to volunteer and give back a bit.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
You have him on speed dial?
Not yet. I can just walk over and knock. We're neighbors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Kristin, any questions?
Just to thank you, I read your resume, and I was very pleased. And to lose Mr. Mackey is a sad thing, but to have someone such as yourself step up, I'm just so relieved and happy, and thank you very much.
Thank you. You?
Hey, also would like to thank you, and I hope this is just the beginning of some more volunteer efforts on your part for the town, because I know what you're capable of.
Right. Yes, we have done some projects that were very transformational, yes.
Thank you. I really do appreciate it, and the town is built on volunteers, so I hope that this is just the beginning. Like I said, thank you.
Happy to be part of the team.
Okay, well, I would entertain a motion that we appoint Lisa Maroni to our MART.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Newman aye?
Smith aye.
Ranson aye. And Lisa, you know the drill. You go see the town clerk, and then, like I said, put him on speed dial. He's got it all right up here. Get him while he's still got it up there.
Well, looking forward to it. Looking forward to building some relationships, more relationships in town, and thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. And then Stephen.
You know that was true.
Stephen, Lisa Maroni. Stephen Wallace.
Yes. We know each other.
I figured. Okay. You want to talk to us about a couple of things this evening? The first would be kennel bylaw?
Yes, as I said in my last visit before you in January, that the planning board is only going to sponsor one zoning amendment at the upcoming town meeting. We were hoping to sponsor the MBTA zoning bylaw, but that's not going to be ready in time for town meeting. So we're left with the kennel bylaw, which is really just cleaning up from the 2022 town meeting where this matter was first considered. At your 2022 town meeting, your Animal Control Board sponsored two kennel-related zoning amendments. The first adding the various types of kennels to the zoning bylaws definition section, and they use the state's official definitions, which is a good thing. And that was passed. The second part, adding the various types of kennels to your zoning bylaws table of uses, was not passed. And as I understand it, the hangup was the issue of personal kennels and allowing them everywhere by right with no restrictions. So the planning board and I have worked on this over the past couple of years, and we are proposing adding the various types of kennels to the table of uses, but we do have some restrictions regarding personal kennels. We are allowing them only in the rural residential district, the commercial district, and light industrial district by special permit. So we're not allowing them by right anywhere. Personal kennels are limited to more than six dogs, and personal kennels need to comply with the building setback requirements. That's it? Questions?
Is that the only line that has changed as far as what we currently have, the one with the personal kennels?
What you see underlined is the new language.
Right, but what has changed in the table of usages?
Right now, they're not in the table of uses, because that wasn't passed.
So we don't have one in effect at all?
No.
Okay.
But after this, we will add the personal kennel.
Yes, you will.
To the table of usages.
And the others as well.
Yes. Okay. Any questions, David?
So what constitutes a kennel? Is it just a fenced-in enclosure? Or would it have to be a building-type structure?
I don't...
The only reason I ask that is if it's a fenced-in enclosure, is that conflict with anything with building as far as setbacks for fencing?
Well, in this, we would make it, first of all, they can be outside enclosures, they can be indoor enclosures. But we've decided that we would like them, whether they're outside enclosures or indoor enclosures, we want them to comply with the building setbacks to protect the abutting neighbors.
The enclosure can be within the property lines, like it doesn't have to be the property line. It could just be an enclosed area within...
Sometimes it's just a dog run.
Right. It's good I know this has been in the works for many years. So it'd be good to be done with it.
Well, the way the state law works is it's kind of screwy, but we have to bring it to you, and then you have to vote to refer it to us, and we have our public hearing. I did let your Animal Control Board know that we were doing this, and when our public hearing is, so if they've got any concerns, they can bring them up at the meeting, but I haven't heard any as yet.
Have you set the date for the public hearing?
Yes, it will be February 22nd.
Jerry, did you have any comments or input?
No, I just wanted to hear what they had.
Okay.
Very often, I knew I was aware of the 22nd hearing date, so...
I would make the motion to refer the kennel bylaw to the planning board.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Newman aye?
Smith aye.
Ranson aye.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'll look you through. We also have a letter or a request from the ZDA. Please be advised that on February 13th, the Zoning Board of Appeals voted to submit the Select Board the enclosed proposed amendment to the town's protective bylaw. Proposal seeks to amend the bylaw governing multifamily development as provided in General Laws C-48. That's five. They would like us to submit this to the planning board for review. Stephen, I was under the impression that this had already been discussed, and the planning board had decided that they weren't going to go for any residential this year.
Yes.
To elaborate.
The first iteration that the zoning board prepared, we had a public hearing on this back in December? No, November. We didn't have a meeting in December. And the planning board voted three to one to not support it. In the meantime, you've got an opinion from Town Council saying that you're not obligated to bring this to town meeting. And if you remember my lengthy pontification at your last meeting, I went through my reasons why I don't think this is appropriate to bring to town meeting this year. It hasn't been properly vetted. As you can see, they're amending it on the fly. I would much prefer that the zoning board respect the planning board's schedule for the zoning overhaul project and come see us next year when we are working on residential zoning across the board.
Okay. Any questions, Kirsten?
Nope.
Nope. I just probably would have to agree with Stephen that perhaps this should be done one big overhaul and not piecemealed.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion that we not support the zoning board's request to send us along to the planning board. All those in favor?
Newman aye?
Smith aye.
Ranson aye.
That's all I got for you.
Oh, no, no.
No, no.
Back it up. As long as you're there.
Yes, ma'am.
We wanted to do a master plan update, and as long as you're here, and so you don't have to stay through a lot of the other, maybe you can go over some of what is happening with the master plan.
Sure. Well, the big thing is the zoning bylaw overhaul. As I said, doing that project in-house, it's a big job, and we need to break it into manageable pieces. Our intent is to update and modernize your zoning bylaw and make it easier to read and We're starting this year with the commercial and industrial zoning elements. Next calendar year, we'll work on the residential, and then the last year, we'll do everything else, like the parking, the signed bylaw, non-conforming uses. So for the economic development elements of zoning, we're doing many things this calendar year. The first of which is holding a couple of public forums in March to discuss people's preferences for what they want to see for economic development. We're having a public forum at 6:30 March 6th. That's a Wednesday night over at the Old Town Hall. We are going to repeat the program again on Saturday, March 9th at 9:30 a.m. So the people who can't make the night meeting can go to the morning meeting. If you can't make the morning meeting, you can go to the night meeting, but it's the same program. I wanted to give people a couple shots at giving us their input. And that's going to inform primarily what people want to see in the performance zone, and if they want to see that developed for economic development, which is the case I'm going to make to them at these forums. But it's also going to inform the planning board's larger effort to overhaul industrial and commercial zoning in total. We've hired a planning consultant to help us out with a set of site plan regulations that will govern large-scale developments no matter where they are in town. That will replace the 15 pages of gobbledygook regulations that govern only your performance zone. We're going to get rid of those and have a set of site plan regulations that'll regulate site plans no matter where they are in town. Standards for parking, landscaping, lighting, egress and access, all of that. I just had my first meeting with the consultant that's going to help us out on this, and we're very much eye to eye on the approach. So we're doing that as well. In terms of the open space and recreation component of your master plan, I've been meeting regularly with an ad hoc group of citizens who are interested in trail planning. Chuck Playstead, who's your chairman of your open space committee, Blaine Burchad on your DPW Commission, and Brian Klein, and Colleen Abrams from Wachusett Greenways. And we're working out the details of formalizing a trail easement across the front of the Onyx property. So that's in the works. I'm also going to help Chuck apply for a mapping grant from the Planning Commission, whereby we map all of the town's chapter lands and overlay various environmental resources on top of them, and that will help them prioritize which of the chapter parcels they want to I'll also be helping them out with reaching out to the chapter property owners, giving them some information on estate planning, letting them know that there are other options for their land other than just selling it to developers. And towards that end, your open space committee is going to be holding a workshop at some point, working with the North County Land Trust, inviting all your chapter property owners, and having them talk with the Land Trust staff and a tax attorney to talk about other options for their land other than just selling it for development.
I don't remember the date, but that postcard already went out.
It did, okay. So I'd say we're actively working on about 70% of the master plan as we speak. If there's anything in particular that you want me to cover, I'd be glad to do that.
In your packet, we printed out the land use and development items in particular, but Stephen covered a couple of the economic development ones as well. Most of it is their bylaw overview. Couple of the other ones were the MBTA community zoning. We're going after the MVP grant, which we have some meetings coming up with the state on that. The permitting guide is complete, thanks to Patty Page. And the FEMA flood maps have been delayed a year, which we will have to...
The bylaws already, it's been approved by Town Council and the state. We just need the maps.
And obviously, we are continuing on with the downtown engineering work, which would be some of the stormwater and looking at the one-stop grant for additional opportunities.
Any questions, answers, input, output?
Nope. I'm good.
A lot of work to get ahead of you. You seem busy.
There's a lot of work to get to this point, anyway. Okay. Anybody else have any questions about where we're going with this mast?
Madam Chair?
Identify yourselves, sir.
Joseph King, Elliot Rowe.
Oh, okay.
Steve, a question about the site planning regulation. When you complete that work, is that intended to come to town meeting for a vote?
We will need to make some revisions to the site planning provision that's already in your zoning. The site plan provision in your zoning enumerates plan requirements and all the stuff, a lot of stuff that should be pulled out of there and put in a set of regulations. For the regulations themselves, we'll have a couple of public forums explaining them to people, but statutorily speaking, the only thing that's required is that the planning board adopt them. Within your zoning bylaw right now, it gives the planning board authority to adopt site plan regulations. Right now, we've got site plan regulations, but it only applies to the performance zone, and that doesn't make much sense, seeing development is everywhere in town. Did I answer your question?
It did, but it prompts another one. We've recently been down a similar path on this, and when regulations get adopted only by, I guess, mandate and only by public hearing, sometimes we run into trouble after that. So my own personal recommendation is it's probably big enough that it goes to town meeting for discussion.
Well, we have to follow the state law on this, which is a planning board adoption. I could certainly talk about them at a town meeting, but a town vote is not required state law-wise. I get your point. I do.
And the second question, I guess I had...
This is third. Wait, aren't you on the finance floor? You can't count either.
The other one was just a carryover.
Uh-huh.
It's a go-back to the kennel discussion. Do you feel with the changes that are being proposed to go back up for vote at town meeting, that you address the concerns for the failure in the first place?
We believe we have. The zoning proposal from 2022 was put together by your Animal Control Board, and they were very permissive where they wanted to allow personal kennels and had no limitations on them in terms of number of dogs or dimensional requirements. And that was the big beef about it at town meeting, if you recall. So we think we've addressed the public's concerns on this. We're making them by special permit, which means that the zoning board, if they don't like the proposal at the very end, they can say no. We're doing them by special permit instead of by right. If you allow them by right, you got to say yes eventually, because the special permit process does allow you to say no at the end if you don't think it's going to fit in with a neighborhood. Thank you.
For sure, you were going to ask him if there were cookies at the forum.
There will be.
Okay, Joe?
And donuts on the Saturday morning forum.
Yeah, see that, Joe? Worth going to. Okay, if no other questions, I'm going to let Stephen go. All right, thank you, Stephen, as always. Very informative. Lot of work. All right, next on our agenda is we've had a request for a potential general bylaw change, and this was... This could go either way. It could go in as a citizen's petition, or we could actually, as a select board, let it move forward on our warrant. Obviously, Town Council will look it over to make sure that it's... There's nothing wrong with it, but just to make sure all the language is right. And would you like to speak to that, Mr. Lane?
Sure.
In less than your wordy fashion.
Richard Lane Tanglewood wrote, "I was initially thinking of moving this forward as a citizen's petition, because I wasn't sure how the board felt on it, and I do appreciate you considering it." And this concerns specifically the Board of Health and what I would characterize as what caused the problem in town recently. The law that allows the Board of Health to enact regulations is antiquated. It requires a notice in the newspaper of general circulation. I've asked everybody that I ever talked to who gets the newspaper, and I haven't had one person so far say yes. I'm sure somebody gets the newspaper, but what happens is, because it's antiquated, nobody gets a notice. And then the next thing you know, the regulation is enacted. And I think a lot of things got purposefully overlooked, in my opinion. There was a public hearing where no one came, not one person, and nobody on that board took a step back and said, "What's going on? We might have a problem here," because we usually at least have one person from town come. And the only thing that was mentioned in their minutes was the fact that no one showed up for the meeting, and it didn't dawn on them that perhaps notification was a problem. I don't think that should ever happen again, especially when a regulation is enacted that affects every single property owner in this town. Every single property owner in this town has some type of septic system, and people should have a right to voice their opinion on it. That's why the law was put in place to begin with. Unfortunately, it hasn't kept up with times. So what this bylaw suggests is that whenever the Board of Health enacts a regulation that exceeds the state minimum requirement, Title V, that they mail a letter to the property owner, letting them know what the regulation is suggesting and when the hearing is, so that they can come and voice their opinion. This is a doable thing, because we've already seen it happen in town. When the petition effort went forward, we all got a letter from the Board of Health in our electric bill. So when the will is there, they can let people know what's going on. So the very action proved that it can occur. So I did look up some case law on this before I put this together, and the Attorney General has ruled, because they have to rule on all bylaws, that as long as it doesn't contradict an existing state law, which this one doesn't, it just builds on it, then it should be passed by the Attorney General. So I did do some homework on that. Do you have any questions for me?
I don't have any questions, but I am wondering, so I'm all for it. We are singling out the Board of Health, which is fine, and I understand why. I just wonder if this couldn't be expanded on, right, to any board that may be making a decision, so that we don't, like Joe was saying, run into this problem again, if it does affect most households in the town, right? I know we have notification to abutters for a lot of things, because it affects them. So anything that would affect the majority of the people somehow get notification to them, regardless of which board it is, if it is going to affect them significantly, but...
That's always a thought, but I was trying to fix a specific problem.
Right, I totally get it.
And I don't think a lot of the board, I don't think most of the boards really have a big problem. A lot of it is because they are required in most circumstances to at least notify the abutters, rather. So the word does get out. And I have also seen a notification on the town's website and on the variable message board out front of other hearings, and...
And this one was not? I can't remember.
I don't recall. I can't say, but I don't believe so. But I can't say for sure. And the big thing is, these regulations affect... And the big thing is, these regulations affect everyone. If someone's putting in a septic system that is, you know, too close to the property line or something like that, those people are gonna get notified on that issue. That's already in the process, but when you, and I can't really draw an exact parallel to the other boards. The planning boards have regulations, but they're really about how they do things, right? This is a regulation that is like a law, and is actually looked at by the courts just like it's a law. That's a lot of power for one board to have, and I think a lot of people need to realize just how much power the Board of Health has. In my opinion, too much power, and this is a way to reel it in a little bit, because, you know, there's case after case, and I know you don't want me to go through them, of the Board of Health and other places really seriously affecting people. West Boylston is a perfect example, and, you know, we can go into that if we have to, but I don't think it really, the point is that the Board of Health has a lot of power. They can change all of our lives very quickly, and I think we all have a right to know when something like that is coming across the desk.
Agreed, and that being said, I mean, I agree with this, and I would suggest that it'd be better that we sponsor it, if we agree to that, than to have it be a citizen's petition, in my opinion.
David?
Well, I agree with, but just trying to get processed here, but I did have some concerns of us singling one board out. I know what's trying to be done, but like Rich says, that there's probably not another board that has this type of power or is capable of changing something so drastic in a residence portfolio, if you will.
And if I may, I don't recall ever in this town having such a controversy from another board over something like this. I just wanna make sure this never happens again.
And that was my concern, too, was, you know, singling out the board, but as you said, and the thing is, this doesn't just affect homeowners, it affects every property owner in town.
And that's why I didn't, when I was writing, I didn't say homeowner, I said property owner.
Right.
And, you know, actually put in there that they would work with the treasurer collector's office, so that they would have everyone who pays taxes.
Her head just whipped up. It's like, what?
And I loved the look. However, if you notice, it would be at the expense of the Board of Health, if they're doing that. So I tried to soften it a little bit.
Anybody have any questions for Richard on this? What?
Joseph King Elliott wrote, "You might expect that I had a question or observation. Is that strong enough, sending a letter of notification within your electric bill?" I agree that that's much amplified from the way it was handled before, Rich, but should something as consequential as this come to town meeting? And I don't think what you're proposing here is limited to your board of concern right now. I just heard from the planning board that wanted to invoke a bunch of mandates around...
They're not mandates for the planning board, Joe. They're site, and what they're trying to do, that's getting off subject. The site plan review has always been something done by the planning board. It's reasonable if you ever get into it, and right now, what they're trying to do, it was only, it only applies to the performance zone. What they're trying to do is to get everybody in line with that. So when you do build a new, for instance, down on Choxit Road, you wanna put in a new building, well, there's site plan review for that, always there has been, now they wanna bring in the rest of it.
And I'm good with all that. I'm good with it if the town citizens and taxpayers are worried. That's where I'm coming from. So whenever you make anything that's a regulation change, as Rich is referring to here, that was a regulation change that went into effect, I get concerned about it. I get concerned about things that affect the whole town, and that zoning change will affect the whole town, of not bringing it to a big forum like a town meeting to make it very public, what is going on here, because it affects a lot.
Site plan review is very site specific, so it would be, I mean, it's gonna be different for every project you're looking at, right? So it'd be really hard to have a town vote on that, which is why we have the planning board take care of those things and look at site-specific situations. If you get everyone weighing in on whether or not that Emma's can have a light outside, you're gonna end up not going anywhere, so that we rely on the planning board to take care of that, and they're capable of...
I hear you on that, I'm just uber cautious.
Right.
So I can address another part of what Joe was asking. So why you couldn't bring this to a town meeting and have a town vote on it is because the Board of Health, just like the way they enacted this regulation, the statute allows them to enact the regulation. We're not gonna change the statute, not sterling. So my next best thing was to make sure everybody knew about it, so when they did have the required public hearing, you know, people can't say, "Well, you know, I don't get that particular newspaper, so I didn't see it," and it wouldn't be mailed through the electric bill. That's not what I'm proposing, that it'd get mailed independently, just to everyone who pays property taxes.
Yeah, my recommendation at town meeting was a notification at town meeting, not a vote at town meeting. That is broadening what you wanna do in enacting any regulation change post that notification at a town meeting.
And that could always occur anyways, but we only get about 300 people at town meeting here. Everybody would be, it would come in the mail, everybody. If there's a better way, I'm certainly on board.
Well, I mean, any of these things can be posted on the website, any of them, you know, and as Stephen has indicated, there's gonna be forums on all of that. So the answer is, show up. Show up at those forums for whatever changes there are. Richard's in a situation where nobody showed up because nobody sent anything out loud or loud enough, and it wasn't a situation where a butters get notified. This was a situation where it affects every taxpayer, every property owner, whereas a lot of the site plan reviews, as Kristen has indicated, doesn't. And if it does, they get notified for it. So I think the biggest thing is for people to pay attention, you know, and show up at these things. They've already, like he was talking about the land trust and the chapter people, they sent out a postcard to all chapter people, you know, they're having this info meeting, you know, you can go or not go.
And these regulations are not process regulations. These are just like a bylaw.
Yeah.
So the Board of Health will still make regulations that say, you know, we need X amount of plans, we need, you know, and, you know, by such and such an engineer or whatever. That's still gonna occur. Those are more of the process regulations, that's what the planning board does, but these are more like a bylaw that affects everybody, you know?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lane. I would entertain a motion to approve this regulation for the BOH, moving it forward, to be put on the town warrant after it's been vetted by town council.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rants and aye. Okay, so we'll have to work on that in the next month, make sure it gets done and done well. So, I have too many lines here. Thanks for stopping by, Terry.
Yep.
All right, how about we go right down to discussing the budget?
We still have a bylaw change.
Oh, another one?
Yep. This was by Finance Committee. It's on the same page.
Oh, that, yes, that, oh, kinda skipped over there, sorry. So we got a very lengthy, knowing that this was on the agenda, we got a very lengthy letter from our town clerk, and she has read the proposed bylaw provisions as submitted by the Finance Committee and would like to share some concerns. First, with over 30 years of municipal experience, it's my professional opinion that the voting policies and processes currently in place provide ample flexibility and opportunity at any particular meeting. She's concerned that the Finance Committee may have failed to correspond with the town moderator, Jennifer Scalisi-Mullet, while the town clerk's, while the town clerk's office and town administrator are heavily involved in the setup and execution of the town meeting. The actual meeting is led by the town moderator. The lack of this communication would seem likely, as the committee also failed to touch base with the town clerk's office when they formulated the proposed provisions. Sounds like they skipped over a step here. It's a responsibility of the town clerk's office to prepare for any town meeting-related voting contingencies. To my knowledge, there has been no issue that would warrant a change of our bylaws or to interfere in our current process. Therefore, I believe that it is best interest of the town to encourage the members of the Finance Committee to hold themselves to the responsibilities of the committee and to refrain from recommendations outside of its purview. While their intentions may be pure, it would be unfortunate should their proposal have immediate, long-lasting, and otherwise unintended consequences and impede the smooth operation of town meeting in the future. So that is respectfully from Kathy Farrell, our Sterling town clerk. So I don't know where this all came from. I mean, I did see that there was a question on it, but it doesn't seem like it went through the right processes in that. Town clerk should be first heads up on this, and apparently she got it secondhand.
Well, I personally apologize for that, and I was asked to forward a request to the select board, which I believe I did, and to Mr. Caldwell. It is, you're trying to believe I did.
Yeah.
And if that's a violation of town policy, I am unaware of it.
It gets processes as well as policy. So...
It was a pure attempt at, hey, we looked at a bylaw along with another one that we looked at. It wasn't the only bylaw change request we made, and it was to modernize what seems to be an old process that hasn't been looked at in years, and with an eye toward, hey, we vote with clickers these days, so shouldn't we look at modernizing it around to allow that as one of the three alternatives, or two alternatives that exist already in the law? A voice vote, which we don't seem to, well, we did for one article, I think, was the naming of some playground recently, we did by voice vote, but everything else was done by clicker. And the third provision is if the voice vote fails and you can't figure it out by a voice vote, it falls to a paper vote with a rather antiquated methodology in there as well, which still exists in the revised bylaw. But it was a pure attempt at, hey, we tripped across this, and we don't do this anymore, so shouldn't we modernize it? I'm not married to the words in the bylaw request. I am suggesting that whoever looks at it, and if we're gonna do any bylaw change, we sweep this one in too, to modernize it to come current with current practice.
Did you talk to the town clerk about this, Joe?
I did not.
Okay.
I don't know the procedure on a bylaw change request like that. So I apologize for that. I believe I sent it to you, Maureen, and I copied, or I sent it to Bill and copied you, or...
Yeah, some of it, yeah.
So shame on me, I didn't forward it to town clerk, because I figured you already did that, so...
My bad, I didn't.
Deja culpa. Bill, did you have any input on this at all, other than what Kathy has submitted?
No, I will agree with that.
Okay, Kristen?
Yeah, just I understand Kathy, what she has to say, but I also think that they did a good job putting this together, and it does make sense, and it is modernized, and it isn't changing the way you run the meeting necessarily, it's just adding the electronic device. So it'd be nice if, you know, Kathy and the Finance Committee wanted to work together and talk about this and ask whether or not it's something she, you know, does she have a problem with the bylaw or just the process, right?
I think the process, it sounds like the process.
So, I mean, this, it is modernizing it, which makes sense to me. And if you read the rest, it's not changing anything, it's not changing the process at all, so it might be a nice addition if she agrees.
Okay.
And I am more than happy to have a discussion with Kathy about the process, and I am...
And the verbiage and all that business, yeah? Okay.
Gouly noted.
And the moderator. And the moderator. Well, I think if Joe works with Kathy, Jen is not always as available as Kathy, so maybe if you work with her, get it polished, get her to agree, then we move forward with that.
There was one other free question, and I don't know whether I had to go through Kathy for that one, too. There was one word that we wanted to change, one word from rate to levy in one of the other bylaws, I think it was 80.7...
Seventy dollars.
Seventy. To reflect the reality of the situation is the levy, not the rate.
So how do you feel about that?
The rate encompasses the levy, so I mean, six of one, half dozen of the other in my book, but I don't have an objection one way or the other to it.
Any questions on that one, Kristen?
No, but I think that it might help people to understand, because they see rate changes, and they don't understand the process, right, which is why you edit the word levy, because if you don't see your rate change, but your bill goes up, there was a lot of confusion. So I think that was just trying to fix the confusion, like, why did my rate not change, but my bill went up? So, I mean, I don't see a problem with it either way, I guess, really, but...
A lot of people don't understand their evaluation and rate and how those work. They understand when my tax bill goes up, which is the levy.
You should be here when the assessors come in and explain all that to us.
I understand, and I'm here all the time with ears on because...
I know you are, and Mr. Mackey, for sure, but, all right, so why don't we take all of those three subjects up at our next meeting, after we talk to Kathy, and then move it forward? That's the way we go. Okay? So how about if we go right to budget? We can do the warrant and hours and all that after we do the warrant, that's gonna be a longer, longer discussion, unless we wanna go right to the police contract amendment sent in.
Whatever you want.
All right, let's go there. That's a quickie. We already talked about it. So we're janned up, Bill, with this one?
David and I met with the folks from the Police Association. In the most recent agreement, nothing was changed in the detailed rate. As a result, we had fallen behind, so the association, the union, had come up with a formula, which would have been the top step patrolman with an associate's degree, overtime rate, which would round up to $60, which puts us in the market. Once that gets executed, that would be the rate for this year, and would go up to $62 in FY '25 based on that, and this would expire at the end of their agreement on June 30th, 2025. Anything future would have to be renegotiated. This gets us in the market with the other towns. We've had some trouble filling details, and one of them is that people are going to other towns, doing details, since the rate is higher in the other towns. So this puts us back in the market. And the vast majority are paid by private contractors, the town does have a 10%... And the vast majority are paid by private contractors, the town does have a 10% administration fee, so.
Any questions, Kristen?
Nope.
Answers.
No answers.
David?
No, this is what we've discussed, so.
And the only caveat, which I had spoken to Michael about, was that it would go into effect in the next full payroll cycle, so it's not split between two different weeks. So I think that's a couple Mondays from now, the 24th, I think, so. And they're fine with that.
I would make a motion that we sign the MOU between the Police Union and the Town Sterling.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Smith and I.
Grant and I. Okay, thanks, David. Bill? All right. And then I wanted Bill to give us an update and be able to answer any of your questions as to where we are with the budget.
Sure. So you have a copy, the most recent copy. We're still waiting on a couple items to send out a new draft, which would be the retirement, what's the regional retirement and our property rates on insurance. But looking at this, any significant changes, increases or decreases, you can ask any questions about. The accountant and treasurer collector, the financial software has been placed into the IT budget, so you'll see a decrease there. David, Favreau and I were able to come up with a different number on the wages for the Board of Health, which would be more in line with what is actually used. There was a fairly significant increase in the senior center building expense for maintenance. They've had several issues there with the maintenance side, so trying to keep up and get ahead on those items. Just as an aside, there's been a couple of programs that have been cut due to the Governor's 9C, cuts a million dollars to Meals on Wheels statewide, and a couple of programs that they offer, a yoga class or Pilates, I don't know, do you remember which one it was?
Pilates, I think, the cost is going to go up.
Had been cut, so there were, there are some cuts that have happened. Traditionally, in the last couple of years, there's been some funding for sidewalks and roads at $250,000. I did reduce it to $225,000. We do receive an additional $260,000 in the fair share amendment from the Millionaires' Tax, which remains in there. And some of the requests were just decreased a bit to share the burden across all departments. The Fire Department is originally requesting two new firefighters in this budget, and the chief is amenable to this, would be seeking one. Obviously, that would have to be pulled out since it is a change in staffing, so that would be a separate article for wages and benefits. Things that may change would be items of the shared services, if we go in that direction with Rutland, we're still working on the job description for a conservation agent. Also, if something changes on the building commissioner front, as I had mentioned before, that is a very hard certification to get and maintain, not only exam-wise, but time-wise, having your construction supervisors and a period of time in the job, along with the six exams for getting your, three exams for getting your local and three to get your building commissioner. So we were trying to share that position for perhaps more than one town, or more than the two towns, and perhaps hire a part-time local inspector to assist with those duties. Yeah, we're still waiting on the property insurance, so we have a 10% in there right now, so that may change a bit. We were not a max town on the health benefits.
The decrease in the library wages, I thought they were looking to add.
So that includes the added Saturday, but because of changes, some of the higher people there are not there, and newer people came in at a lower rate. And the question came up last night as well about the Council on Aging. All of the positions, with the exception of the director, were regraded. Basically, all of them were based essentially at minimum wage rates, so they have all been regraded as of the compensation study and the policy that the Select Board enacted shortly after I started, which was the first few steps were annual, the middle steps were every other year, and the last three steps were every third year. So not only did they move up, but they're moving across, which is why that was such a big increase. Obviously, election expenses, those fluctuate. This year, obviously, has a significant amount of them, and we are still waiting on the two school districts, which we will see where those come in, and should we borrow anything for capital, the debt service will change, so. Capital Committee is working on those. Do you have any questions, comments, concerns, otherwise?
Yeah, this doesn't, these aren't the final numbers for the schools either.
They were placeholders until we get a better idea. I know we have the school district administration coming in here on the 13th. They have their meeting with the towns on the 29th, which we should have at least a draft. I might have something before that. As for Monty Tech, I'm not sure. I've got to poke them and see what their timeline is.
And for the building expense on the senior center, is that for anything specific or just a little extra padding for all the things?
Obviously, anything that's come up, they have been right up against their budget this year, and they've had, you know, unexpected expenses that have come up.
Well, look at this.
John Coecoin, 90 Beeman Road, Sterling. I just was wondering how we get a bylaw to recreate the old earth removal board. I hear, see my old comrade back there. I'm like, I'm like.
What is wrong with you?
My question, I remember that board, I don't know why tonight, but.
Richard, you're right there, slap on both of you.
On camera.
My question for Bill is, is the budget online by any chance? I know it's early on in this process, but if we were online, could we look at it or?
Not yet.
No, okay. Did I hear?
Once I have the other items that we're waiting for, before we start moving things around.
Did you say there was a budget request for two new firefighters over and above what we have right now, or? Are they, are they replacing firefighters, are they?
No, this would be two, plus two. In the budget is currently plus one.
Okay. All right, just sort of digest that one a little bit, but how is the budget looking right now? I mean, preliminary for?
Right, right there, obviously, there's still four or five placeholders in there. It's with the schools, a 4.46% increase.
Okay. Well, that's not crazy. I do want to say my bill went up 2.2% this past quarter over the previous quarter. My friend and former partner, Todd, his went up 2.3%, I think the difference is due to rounding. I'm very pleased with that, and I just want to thank you all for that and the Finance Committee, but I hope we can continue to, I don't know how it happened with the raises, you know, there's always three, four percent raises and this stuff, but I like those rates, and I hope that we can maintain that kind of minimum increase going forward.
We'll have to take a second look at that, I'm making a note right now.
Did I say something wrong? I'm sorry. That's all, thank you.
Two percent, that was wrong. Anything for you, David? You did do a little bit of trimming for some of these, some of these things that we never spend all the money on.
No, but we don't want to particularly, I know the legal expense would come up at one of the meetings, you know, you don't want to wipe that out or decrease it significantly so that if something does significantly come up, you're not in a bad spot.
Anything else? No? You sit through this every weekend, huh?
I look at it every day, Maureen.
Yeah. You shouldn't do that, Joe, because it doesn't change every day. All right, so just, you know, keep us updated. I do try to get to the Finance Committee meetings, but they're hard. Just focusing on finances, it'd be great. And focusing on not necessarily just the cost of something, but of the services, we talked about that, you know, as far as cutting our nose off to spite our face as we move forward. All right, so then we have to do the voting hours for the local elections. We're still going with the noon time on this. Yeah, and this is just for the local elections. All right. Because I think when we get to the big ones.
They're 13 hours.
Yeah, it'll have to be a little bit longer.
Yeah, that's on here, too, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
So people know that, moving forward, this is just for the elections in May. Primaries are May, March 5th, right? Want to go, Dave?
Make a motion that we approve the hours for the town election that Kathleen Farrell from the clerk has moved forward to us.
Second?
Any further discussion? Okay, the town election is scheduled for May 13th, and it'll be set for 12 or noon time to 7:00 PM. And actually, should mention that the state election laws allows early voting by mail for local elections as well, so. You probably all got that postcard in the mail, that, you know, you could sign up for early elections, and you don't have to be sick or out of town. That being said, Grant and I?
Newman, I.
Smith and I.
And then we need to sign the warrant.
Motion to sign the warrant for the election on March, oop, on March 5th, 2024.
All those in favor?
Newman, I.
Smith and I.
Grant and I. And that one is from 7:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night, the primary. All right, and that's about it there. We did also, and I don't think you all had a chance to read it, but we forwarded a letter from the Finance Committee again, and in a nutshell, we'll take this in our next meeting, we can approve or rejew it or whatever you want to do. But in a nutshell, they're asking that, you know, the state take another look at our foundation budget. It's always been something with you, Mr. Coecoin, as far as the chapter 70, so. They're kindly requesting their assistance. So we'll look at that, these guys haven't seen it yet, so knew it was coming, but. All right, so there's that, and then we've got another, did you all get a copy of that or do?
Yeah.
Okay, so, didn't. We also got a letter from SLCT, which is a Sterling Lancaster Community Television, who we appreciate to no end. An appreciation for the use of the physical space in the Butrick Municipal Building for our broadcasters' transmission equipment and other support benefiting our cable casting operations. SLCT would like to donate $1,200 to Maureen Cranston. Oh, wait, I read that wrong, it's Town of Sterling. Their ongoing successful operations will not, would not be possible without the initial and continuing support of the Select Board. For that, we are sincerely grateful. We look forward to a continued mutually fruitful partnership with the Town of Sterling in providing public access to television and media services to its citizens. And that came from the Board of Directors, AKA Mr. Richard Mackey signed off on this. Thank you, Mr. Mackey.
Thank you.
We do appreciate what they do. I think it gives everybody a little bit better chance to see what is actually going on in town. And then, Mr. Caldwell, would you like to slowly do your town administrative's report?
We took, yeah, three of them already, so.
Okay.
That's, that's good. We have been meeting with our engineers on the beach work and the athletic field study design, we met with them today, and we met with Lar, I don't know, what day was that? Tuesday? Wednesday? Sure. Trying to figure out what exactly we need to do. Obviously, we had the original DCR funds from a few years ago and the earmark that had come in from the legislature this year. So the primary goal would be to get some of the trees taken down that we need to. The second would be the erosion control. We've taken care of one item, which is the infiltration pit at the end of Hall Ave. The second would be a trench that goes around the parking lot and feeds into a radon garden on the far side of the basketball court, which should capture the runoff there, which then wouldn't run off onto the beach and hopefully slow down all the water. There's additional things on Hall Ave, but we have projects that need to happen first to upgrade the road and some of the erosion control with Sweat Hill further upstream before we can do those. And then, depending on the pricing, what else we can get done in terms of the beautification of the park. So the primary goal is the, is the trees and the erosion control. After that, we'll, we'll work on the other items. As for the field study, Sherry and I met today with the engineering firm, who's moving right along, and will be beginning their, I guess, schematic design of what we're going to look at for the maximum use of those fields and how we may have to move things around or not move things around to maximize what we have, come up with a better field maintenance plan to enhance those and maintain them the best that we can at this point. Also, or the last item that I have would be the, there is some movement on the Select Board expansion legislation that was enacted in the House and Senate and is at the Governor's Office for a signature. So I believe, it's my understanding at this point, that it would have to go to a ballot question. If that is approved, then it would go to the voters, not this May, but next May, 2025, for the expansion. Summer for the elevator work at the library, they're doing the upgrade to the fire alarm system now. I know they're still working on a few things with the school security before they get that rolling, and obviously, they have to time it, they can't really be ripping parts of the building apart with, you know, the kids there. So I know they're trying to target either the vacations or the summer, depending on what they have for staffing. And this spring, we'll do the Maple Street sidewalks, the Bird Street sidewalks that go with that. That's another grant that has to go. We have significant grant funds that we need to expend before the end of the fiscal year, along with those for the downtown engineering, which is moving along quickly.
Any questions, Kristen?
Nope.
David?
Well, thank you.
I think we'll put it out there also, tomorrow night is the, you're meeting with Capital and Finance with the consultant from UMass for the CBC, so, and it's a web type thing, a Zoom meeting. So if anybody's interested in that, you can sign into that. And then also, papers, nomination papers are available for our boards and the elections in May that we just talked about, so, and just about every board has an opening. School Committee, DPW, assessors, Select Board, BOH, Library, SML. School committee, DPW, assessors, select board, BOH, library, SMLD, moderator. And a planning board, huh?
Oh, yeah, planning.
Planning board, yeah. So there's, you know, there's some incumbents in there, but who knows? If you want to see some change, get involved, that would be my tip. Anything else, Kristen?
No, just for next meeting, maybe if we want to consider, I know you're aware of some of the issues, the senior center with the floor and the chairs and things, and I wonder if we can discuss, once I get some more numbers from Sheila, possible use of funds to help get maybe the chairs or something, like ARPA funds or something to help get things moving for safety for seniors that use the center.
Yeah, we'll talk about that next meeting, I guess.
Yeah.
She can come in and make her request. Why wouldn't she have gone through the budget process for this? Get numbers and?
She, I think, started with, I think she started, but issues were coming up quickly and after I discussed things with her, see what we need to do. But just letting everyone know, there are the floors and chairs at the senior center.
Well, Chuck was looking into the floors, and there's already money for that, so chairs is a new one.
Yeah.
But we could.
The backs popped out during an event, so.
So if they have 140 of them. Just saying.
Right.
So I, yeah, I think we'd need some more numbers on that, but I really wish that that had been done beforehand and get into the capital if she's looking for big, big dollars. I do know that we have the floor covered monetarily, so the other things are a surprise, surprise.
We have a prize for her, too, so.
Okay, and along the same lines, there's other funding sources besides taxpayers. Okay, anything else, Mr. Mackey?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, and you're going to give some really good guidance to Ms. Maureen?
I am, thank you.
Thank you so much. Richard, anything else?
No.
Sure?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kilcoyne?
All good, thank you.
Well, thank you for coming. Mr. King?
I'll only have my usual question, have you had any responses on the scholarship?
Nope, nothing yet, right? Nothing yet.
Nothing yet.
Like last year, last?
It'll be like last year, the last week.
Last minute, yeah. I did run into Mr. Lane and he, Mr. Roy Lane, not you, and he knows it's coming up, but also knows there's nothing yet, so. All right. Ms. Vicki?
All set, thank you.
All right, and Mr. Bill?
All set, thanks.
All right, then I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Me and I.
Smith and I.
Not to you, let's stay a little longer.